All right, this is the Village of Peatown Committee of the Whole Meeting for February 24, 2014. I call this meeting to order and please take attendance.
Mr. Riker.
Here.
Mr. Huckkey.
Here.
Mr. Wicker.
Here.
Mr. Hagg.
Here.
Mr. Callahan. Mr. Forsythe.
Here.
Okay, let the record show that we have a quorum present and may officially conduct business. First order of business being the approval or correction of the minutes from the January 27, 2014 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Trustees, I will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes as presented, or if you see a reason to make a correction, let us know about that correction.
Motion.
Seconded.
Motion by trustee Huckkey, seconded by trustee Forsythe to approve the minutes of the January 27, 2014 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Clerk, please call the rule.
Mr. Huckkey.
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe.
Yes.
Mr. Hagg.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries and the minutes become the official record. This is our monthly meeting to elicit comments from the public and the public is here. Steve, you want to come up and...
You're it. Hello. Just for those who, I think almost everybody knows who I am, I'm Steve Cross and I own the furniture store at the funeral home here in Peatown, downtown Peatown. And I had had a conversation with the mayor on Tuesday and Mr. Gray stopped and saw me on Wednesday also, but I thought, I was thinking today, well, heck, we got a committee of the whole meeting tonight, you know? That's a good way for me to kind of just talk to the trustees and maybe get a little feedback from you. I know Mr. Gray had said he was going to send a memo out to the trustees and I'm not, you know, thinking that you wouldn't do it, but I just thought I would take advantage of the committee of the whole and just try to have a conversation and get some feedback. My concern is, you know, with the downtown sidewalks, with the snow. In the past, you know, most of the businesses have been really, really good about clearing their sidewalks. This year has really gotten to be bad because of having quite a few empty businesses, you know, downtown and those buildings aren't clearing their sidewalks. The hardware store next to me recently closed his doors and now he's not shoveling his sidewalk. And on Tuesday, I just noticed a large number of people having to walk in the street to kind of navigate their way through the downtown. And then, you know, that just, that concerned me. So I just wanted to throw it out, you know, to the board, you know? As I see it, there's two, two ways to go. Either make the building owners responsible, you know, for clearing their sidewalks or somehow the village, you know, assuming that responsibility. The problem, I don't know how many of you know the down, I know all of you know the downtown. The problem is to get the snow off the sidewalks, the only place for that snow to go is to, is to the streets. Once you get it to the streets, you know, then it can be taken away. If people don't clear their sidewalks before the plows are out, then we end up with, you know, that three-foot pile at the curb and that causes a problem for people trying to get out of their cars and get onto the sidewalk. And like I said, in the past, it's really been pretty good about most of the businesses getting out earlier, evening before and getting that snow out there, but, you know, again, now it's really becoming an issue. And Tom and the guys have always done a good job, you know, clearing the downtown and, you know, especially, you know, taking the time to, to clear the edge, but if they, if the snow's not there for them to take, you know, then they can't take it. That's my hope.
And Tom, Tom was down there today, they were salting to try and get rid of some of the ice that was left down there. George, have you looked up and found anything in ordinances that requires...
We have nothing in ordinance requires anyone in the village to clear their sidewalk with snow.
Where's Louis Horner when you need him? He used to do that.
Right.
Louis used to do it. Another man is dead.
Yep.
But, I don't know.
You know, and like I said, I don't know if it'd be something, you know, I know other villages, you know, do, do the downtown area. I'm not, I do my sidewalk, you know, but my concern is...
The vacancies.
Right, exactly. And when I have something going at the funeral home, you know, I'm all street parking and if, I've been shoveling, you know, Danny's and I go shovel to the north and me too, especially when I have a service going, to make sure that block is opened up. But Tuesday, when I drove through the downtown and, you know, there were several other parcels on Second Street and, you know, all the way down in front of the old Napa store, that whole block wasn't shoveled, in front of VIP, you know, wasn't shoveled, in front of Second Street wasn't shoveled, you know, in front of Danny's wasn't shoveled. You know, it just becomes, like I said, people having to walk out into the street to navigate through the downtown and, you know, it makes it difficult for people to patronize the downtown businesses.
It doesn't, and you, you face a double whammy because of the fact that your business is the kind where a lot of folks coming are elderly.
Absolutely.
Who are going to have difficulty.
Right.
Trustees, we're open to discussion.
Don't we have that John Deere tractor with the plow on it? It would, it would only take, my God, 10, 15 minutes to do Main Street and Second Street probably if we're going up to Public Works.
How big is that plow though? I mean, he's talking sidewalks.
It's pretty big.
Yeah, he's talking sidewalks.
I don't think he could do that.
I know some municipalities have the, the four-wheeler that has the, the plow, the push plow in the front or the, the sweeper.
The snow blower.
Yeah.
The snow blower catcher. See, my only thought is, the sooner you get the snow off the sidewalk.
Easier.
Off the street, it's easier for it to be hauled away. I don't, like I said, I have no problem shoveling my own sidewalk and I'm not discussing this for that reason. What I'm trying to do is, you know, come up with a solution for the good of the entire village and the entire downtown area.
Which we appreciate.
What does Riker do?
They just do the main park downtown, all the businesses, they don't touch.
They do their own, don't they? Yeah. We're prob, we're probably going to have to pass an ordinance for the downtown area to require that.
But they don't have the problem like Steve's talking, it's not...
Empty.
Empty. George, even if you bought a snow blower, do you have the manpower to do it?
See, that's, one of the issues is the timing, you know? We...
Because they're in a plow truck.
All of our guys are in the trucks plowing and, and I'm not saying there isn't, they're going to find a solution, but one of the first things that comes to my mind is all the guys are in the trucks plowing when they're, when you're trying to beat the sidewalks and...
My only other thought is, you know, contracting it out, I mean, for as many times as it happens and it, and you, you're not going to do it if it snows an inch, you know, obviously. I mean, it's got to be some kind of threshold, you know, for an amount to make it worthwhile. If we have an inch of snow, shoveling that snow into the street doesn't cause, you know, a problem, but it's when you have, you know, four inches or six inches of snow and you're trying to push that off all of the sidewalks, you know, that's when you're creating that log jam and if it's not done soon enough, the plows can't get to the curb because you've got cars parked there. So I'm, like I said, I'm not expecting an answer tonight. It's just something that I wanted to throw out there and I know, like I said, I knew George was going to pass it on, but I figured I would take advantage of the committee of the whole, you know?
All right, trustees, any, any questions?
Are there any liabilities for the village doing it?
Michael?
Yeah, I was always in the assumption if you, if you didn't shovel, it's considered an act of God. If you did shovel and didn't do it properly and somebody slipped and fell, then it's, you're liable.
That's, that's correct. So in some cases, I think that's why people don't shovel, but if, if you undertake shoveling, you have to do it in a, in a workman-like manner.
Well, I think the uniqueness of our downtown area, there is, the parking comes to the curb, that's the only thing they've got. I wouldn't say for the whole village, but for a certain area like that, I think it's going to have to be the business owners or the building owners' responsibility.
Yeah.
And the right of ordinance to say you got to clean it.
Right. I mean, I have seen ordinances to that effect and, you know, if someone wasn't doing it, you could cite them. But I, I don't know if that would get everybody, but... They have to motivate some.
I think you'd have to look around at some other villages, see what, if they've got a, you know, a similar problem, how they handle it. And if there's such an ordinance, it'd probably be like the grass after so many inches of snow versus grass so tall.
I believe, I was told, and I don't know it for a fact, but I believe Mantino does, you know, their downtown sidewalks and they're in a similar situation, you know, as we are with the, the street parking. They do have a little parking lot there along the railroad tracks.
Well, they're, yeah, they're, they're not on both sides of the street like we are, you know, they got the track and they got a parking lot across the street, plus the whole one side of the street is vacant, the businesses, you know, so...
Now, are the sidewalks all village right of way or is opposed to being within the property?
Yeah, there's zero property lying downtown and we got the building right up to the sidewalk, to sidewalk, to the street, I mean, there's...
So the sidewalks are on the village side of the property line?
I would think so.
I, I believe so, but I'm not, again, I'm not...
Yeah, I mean, there's zero property lying down there. I mean, the buildings are built right to the sidewalk. Sidewalk goes from the sidewalk to, to the curb. I mean, there's, I'm just assuming that, but I, I couldn't, I couldn't think of any other reason. I don't think you own that the sidewalk.
I'd have to look at my, my survey.
Yeah. You'd take a little bit of research because it may, the way the downtown developed historically, it may even vary from property to property. I mean, we ran into that in some of the older sections of town.
That's probably the way it is. All right, but it's interesting to look at.
Yeah, I think it's just, you know, I think it's something that has to be addressed one way or the other, you know?
Especially if you're going to have winters like this again.
Exactly, and I, I have a feeling we might be in a little bit of a cycle. I hope so.
I hope not. But it helps to have this in place. All right, at this point, we're going to be investigating possible ordinances, looking at...
Or somebody's solving the problem.
Other communities and their solution to this problem. And, and the goal is to have something by next winter, I guess is the best way to put it, because please, let this be the last of the big snow.
We might, we might have another and we'll, you know, survive through it, but, like I said, I just, I appreciate your time.
Well, thank you, Steve. We appreciate you coming.
Good to see you, Steve.
It's good to be seen. Thanks. Good to be seen someplace else.
Yeah.
See you tomorrow night.
All right, trustees, is there any other business that needs to come before us? Hearing that, what I'm going to do is this. I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation. So, is there a motion to that effect?
Motion.
Seconded.
Motion by trustee Huckkey, seconded by trustee Forsythe to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation. Clerk, please call the rule.
Mr. Huckkey.
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe.
Yes.
Mr. Hagg.
Yes.
Mr. Rikers.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Okay. Motion's carrying and we're going into executive session. Steve, you'll appreciate this, one of the trustees said, "If we go into executive session, we make..."
Okay, is there a motion to open the public session of the committee of the whole meeting for February 24, 2014?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Huckkey and second by trustee Forsyth to...
Go back into open session.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Huckkey.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hagg.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Reichert.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We are now in open session. And I will inquire of the trustees, is there any further business to be discussed at the committee of the whole meeting? Hearing done, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the February 24, 2014 committee of the whole meeting.
So?
Motion by trustee Reichert, second by trustee Wicker, to adjourn the February 24, 2014 Village of Theatone Committee of the Whole Meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Reichert.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Huckkey.
Yes.
Mr. Hagg.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries and the committee of the whole meeting is officially adjourned. Okay, motion carries and the Committee of the Whole Meeting is officially adjourned.